Hello, hello and welcome to the live verbally effective podcast. It is hump day. It is Wednesday. This is a day that has changed the city of Memphis where it really started last night, but we're gonna get into that before we get into all of the juiciness. However, I just want to remind everybody about some programming that I am doing this Saturday at the historic Casa Library. I am doing a podcast boot camp at 33 South Front Street Casa Library from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM. You can actually go to the Casa Library website and RSVP today. There will be another podcast, Understanding Your Target Audience in Podcasting, another workshop on Tuesday evening at 6:00 PM at Casa. So I need you guys to go ahead and RSVP on today because seats are limited. But let's get into the juicy juicy. Well, see, I don't even know why I'm bringing it up like this. However, everyone is feeling some kind of way today because the Memphis School Board ousted. They really did it. They ousted the superintendent who had only been there nine months, Dr. Marie Fagin. She is gone and I have two guests with me today that are going to give their commentary on what we all saw last night. First of all, can I say that it was very, I'm not gonna say entertaining with Theron Barnes, Harvey, Deborah Siggy, my mom and political, political, what should we call you, Mom? Because you've been in politics in Millington, Tennessee forever.
Well, I guess you can call me a voice for the voice. That's what I, that's what gets me involved in politics. You know, because I don't like politicians. I like real politicians.
Okay. Was it entertaining last night from what you saw? You wouldn't call that entertainment?
No, what I saw last night to me was really somewhat of an embarrassment. And a train wreck. It was because most of those people called themselves, that was down there activists. And they were there to support Dr. Fagin, which they have every right to do, you know. However, the disruption of getting loud cursing and going off on people because they didn't like what was said, but they want to be heard. So my thing is both, both sides want to be heard, but when they didn't like what they heard, it got very disruptive, you know, and start using derogatory words and, and, and calling people out. You know, and I, I think that's, that's not gonna get you anywhere, not even as an activist, because I consider myself a community activist and what I've been doing here in Millington for all these years. And, but, you know, in the beginning, when I first started doing it, an angry black person is not gonna get nothing done. Then when I saw that when I went there and, and, because they used to look at me like condescending, you know, didn't hear me, you know, and then I would get, you know, really go there with him. And then I said, you know what? That's not gonna get me what I need. What I needed to do was to come with facts and that's what I did. I changed my attitude and I just start coming to them, presenting my facts, because I didn't like what was happening in the community I was living in. So I started doing my research. I showed where they were doing redlining. I showed where they weren't putting money where it needs to be. And I think those activists in Memphis, they mean well. I have seen what some of them want to do, but to go the route that they're going behind this school board situation, I think is wrong and it's embarrassing.
Wow. It was, it was like a circus last night. We thought that, we thought that as the meetings would go on, the decorum, Robert's Rules of Order, you know, all those things, everything would, I guess, be streamlined at that point. But Theron, is that what you witnessed last night?
I knew it was gonna be bad when they pushed back the meeting, because then people had too much time to let it marinate and mull it over and, and figure out, you know, their respective game plans, whether they're getting their stuff together or figuring out a way to double down and get more support behind them. But everybody forgot yesterday that this is about the youth in education, which is one of the most controversial, unfortunately, issues that is happening and failing to be properly addressed in this nation is education. It's controversial because you have the public school folks versus the charter school folks versus the private school folks. And at the end of the day, the state mandates that a child receive an education up to a certain point. And everybody forgot the youth in this matter and there were youth in that room. And so when we talk about setting standards and professional boundaries and showing decorum or quote unquote proper ways to do things. Well, what example were those folks setting last night? From the board chair on down and each one of them had something different that added to or maybe took away from the conversation, which frustrations were high. So that was to be expected. And then they waited to address it at the very last minute, like the meeting had been gone, going on for a number of hours. But we didn't just see this in Memphis, right? Like there are clips of these meetings, some of the after the meeting things going viral. And now not only do they have to answer for that, the state is gonna have a response. The entire country may have a response when it comes to how people at the school board meetings. Because that was a thing at one point. They were showing all the crazy school board means and now Memphis is in that mix too.
We are in the mix. I wish Memphis could get in the mix for more of the positive news that's coming out of the city. However, the Daily Miffian, they analyzed that 209 page report from the investigation, which appeared to focus on Dr. Fagin's truthfulness with board members. Can we first talk about the lawyer that was present at the meeting, right? We, we did see Michelle McKissick said that, you know, he was doing this whole preamble, the pumping stance in the beginning, what is he doing with the theatrics? He was supposed to state the facts.
Right.
I feel like we still don't know the facts. Now, we can look at this 209 page document, but I spoke with Theron last night. They didn't even use their own hired attorney. They brought an attorney in.
So they, they had, I think Justin Bailey is the board's attorney and they have restructured how the attorney and school board and superintendent relationship goes. So they had somebody to go to for legal counsel and advice. My guess would be, and it would completely be an assumption, but my guess would be that they didn't like whatever legal feedback they were given and they decided that they wanted to find an attorney that would support their claims. Not necessarily the truth, but support their claims. And they, if anybody who knows Robert Spence knows, he gonna take on some government. If you tell him something that ain't going right or you think it's not, he, he will take on the challenge.
He's notorious for that.
Absolutely. He is and he wins a lot. I don't know what his record has been lately, but he has a track record of winning in very similar situations. But what is concerning about that is that one of the articles today said the board chair, Joyce Doris Coleman was responsible for hiring Robert Spence. So where did the money come from? Who paid for that? Did she pay out of her own pocket? I don't think so. I could be wrong, but I don't think so. Was that some special general fund that the board had? Who, who paid for that? Did taxpayers pay for that? I think everybody who's a Memphis and Shelby County resident, they deserve to know what they're actually paying for and what they're getting in return. Because what it looks like from last night is their return on investment is null and void and non-existent for the foreseeable future. And this is what it did. And it's not a courtroom. It's a school board meeting, right? And, and he, Robert Spence, Attorney Spence made it a courtroom. But we ain't here to, you, you not here to argue, no President, this is not a jury trial. This is a school board. You represent your clients. You speak on behalf of them. He should have simply read the text and let that be it. But we know he gonna put on a show. We know the circus was there. It was a lot of players and actors around. But it's sad because at the end of the day, people were thinking that there was one possible vote of a board member that could be flipped. And, and there's debate around who was the most flippable. But then you throw a board member Keith Williams in there, who I perceive was there to make sure the deal was done. Because at least one of the board members was feeling some pressure. And at the moment that the powers that be and the folks behind them saw that, they knew that they needed to have a backup plan and that backup plan was named Keith Williams and he came on.
He surprised me. Let me just say that because he was pro Fagin's in the beginning. And you saw when it came to Ote, she passed. Putted it to him and he said, yes. And I was like, oh.
I got a text. I'm trying to find the time that I got it so I can be.
Were you surprised, Mom?
Also.
I was surprised because Ote passed and then I hear Keith say yes. And he was not on board in the beginning. It was the school board five. You know, Keith Williams wasn't even part of that.
He was not a part of that.
And I started seeing, and, and when Amber Garcia was speaking, I think she kind of felt that Ote was listening.
Because she said, girl, I got your back.
And, and then that's why I believe Ote passed. And when Keith said yes, she said, no, then hurry up and said yes. And when she did that, another board member said, what'd you say? And then they asked her to repeat what she said and she said, yes. She could have went on and kept her answer, no, because Keith had already said yes. And she could have went on and went with her gut and how she felt and said no. Because at the end of the day, we did not get the answers that we were looking for. Because when I wrote the Shelby County Commissioners, I told them to think before they act on that no confidence resolution, which really means nothing. It's just a document. However, I looked at it as, because Amber Mills is my Shelby County rep. And when I saw that and heard that, I'm like, why would she do that? Why will another elective board get involved in another elective board situation? They wouldn't want it. So when I heard that, I'm like, and I, I wrote all of them. Because on that Friday, when they, to, to, to take her resolution to a vote on that following Monday, I wrote that Friday, every, and only two that said voted no to take it down for a vote was Henry, Commissioner Henry Brooks and Lowry, Mikael Lowry. So I said, okay, you know, that was Friday when they made the vote. I'm sorry, I did the email that Monday, when they were gonna vote on it and told them, think before you, and I, and I gave them reasons why, my reasons, what I thought as a constituent, because I am Shelby County also. So when that happened, I tried to let them know, this was nothing but Amber Mills is a Republican. That was a tool that can be used for the state to say, oh, their own county commissioners have no confidence in them. So that's why I was asking them to think before you act. And so I felt like my email did make a difference because four other people said no on it when they actually voted on her resolution. And Lowry had abstained, but then he flipped and went on and voted yes, because it already passed. I'm like, you should have kept your abstain, Larry, because I was thinking about, you know, what position you probably run for next, uh, next year. So, you know, I, I, you know, I stand on what you're gonna do.
County mayor.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. So I didn't like that. If you abstained, then you should have stayed abstained because it already passed. You see, I'm one of those people, I am an informed voter. I'm not just gonna vote for anyone just because of your name and that's Memphis problem.
Memphis is a very name driven culture.
Yes, they are name recognition culture. I want to show you too something. Theron, you're from Memphis, right?
Yes, ma'am.
We are not, right? So when our, my husband told me, we gotta move to Memphis. I'm like, what? You know, I said, that's where Martin Luther King passed and they still seem like they backwards. You know, that's how I felt. I'm just being honest. I've been in politics and watching things for a long time. So before I moved here, I, I worked this book here. And I, I would recommend if you were born in Memphis, read this book.
Okay.
Because John Branston is the author of this and he is the senior editor of the Memphis Flyer. And when I was the president of a book club, we had him come out. So I had my book signed. This book is going nowhere.
Rowdy Memphis.
Rowdy Memphis.
You haven't shared that book with me, Mom?
No one's getting this book.
Well, I would like to partake in it.
This book really helped me understand the culture of Memphis.
I'm grabbing that when I come over there.
Yes, it's a lot. No, no, you can purchase. It's a lot less now. It don't cost what I paid for it. This book is, when we moved, 1995, this book is old, old, you know.
Autograph, he ain't getting it.
But was that book true? Is what's in that book true about Memphis? And in a nutshell.
Yes, and in a nutshell, I think, I think John Branston told Memphis culture accurately.
So summarize it for us from the book.
It comes with pictures. It talks about Willie Harrington becoming, you know, how, it talks about Harold Four, how he became the first black, you know. It just talks, oh, it even go all the way to Trump, Ross Trump.
Wow.
And everything. It gives such a historical, but you know what? Nothing much changed.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's disappointing to me.
Yeah.
You know, and that's why I never got involved in the Shelby County Democrat Party, because you have to register as a Republican or Democrat. And I consider myself independent because, because I don't care for either party at this point.
Yeah.
You know, but I will vote for the person who I think is the most credible. Because Memphis need to get out of that mindset of voting on name recognition. They need to stop putting 20 people in one race, you know. Because if they do that in 2026.
You better say it.
If they do that in 2026.
Marsha Blackburn gonna be the Tennessee governor if they don't watch out.
And not only that, not only that, the Republicans gonna run Shelby County. They're gonna get every seat.
Is that what we want, ladies?
I don't think that's what.
No, because what happened, we don't want that because I'm gonna tell you why. Do you, I, I know, I know some Republicans, don't get me wrong, but there's a difference between Republicans and MAGA.
That's right.
Okay. And MAGA wants control of Memphis. MAGA wants control of Shelby County. And MAGA wants control, which they already have control of the state, you know, and everything. But if Memphis do not get it together, they think they're upset now behind firing of Dr., the termination of Dr. Fagin. They're gonna really be upset. So I hope they can take all of that energy. Even if they still supporting Dr. Fagin, try to get her job. I don't think they're gonna get her job back. And I, I'm not sure if Dr. Fagin is going to win a lawsuit, because I believe they may, that they do have the evidence. It's just that we have not been able to hear it. So we're gonna have to wait for someone to just, that book he showed, because I don't even see why it was a whole book.
209 pages, but I am.
209 pages to present the evidence. I just think that was.
That's a lot. But I am seeing in all the media outlets here locally in Memphis that Dr. Fagin is planning a legal battle with the board, as she should, I believe. And before we continue, we have a few people in the chat. I want to send a big shout out to Ruben Campbell and one of my sororors, Benita Gordon. Ruben has a lot to say. Let's look at some of his comments. What he, what Ruben, let's see what old Ruben talking about, my good friend. He said, they use the same attorney that represented Joris Ray when he was in trouble. He also said, he also lost the case against the school board five last year. Also, the school board is using that same PR firm that is representing Joris Ray. So that's Deidre Malone's PR firm, correct? And he says, that's too much of a conflict of interest. Do you ladies agree that that is a conflict of interest?
Well, I want to be clear about what, what board, because I know at one point, KQ was doing something with the board. So we need to be clear about who, who the PR firm is for the board. Now, there is some connection to Carter Malone Group and one of the board members individually, but I'm not sure who's the current PR firm for the board.
So the board has a PR firm. Is that correct?
At one point, I don't know if they own retainer, but at one point they had somebody that was.
Why would they need a PR firm, firm though?
Doing.
That's what I'm trying to understand. You know, why would the board need a?
Well, I would say that each one of them needs a PR.
I'm gonna tell you what, because I personally feel like a board member should not state certain things on social media. No elected official should put certain comments like, you know, doors closed, no apology and all this stuff, you know, because see, that's making your constituents go, whoa, wait a minute. That's wrong. You mean, tell me I can't have an opinion or either just because we having this issue right now and you didn't like what I had to say, because these people, the, the, the audience itself, they were going at it and they were going at people hard and personally. But then when you think about it, you can understand why, you know. And I, although I don't like that, because I think there's a way to, to express yourself. But then I even tried to speak out to that board member. I said, you need to stay off social media. You know, the things you saying is not good for an elected official.
So I think some of them, so there's, there's one thing to campaign. There is another thing to govern. And I don't believe that some of the people behind the people have shown them ways of good governance and some of them are just going off on what they want. But that's the difference is when you step into elected leadership, you step further into the public eye and you open yourself up to public scrutiny. Whether you want to or not, it's gonna exist. And so it's important for them to know what boundaries they are. Now, that's not to say that they won't ever get pushed to the edge and that they don't have a right to defend themselves, but there's a way to do it. And sometimes, and this took me to get into my 30s to learn, sometimes it don't have to be you. My mentor, John Gardner in Indiana, would be so proud that I have finally learned this. Sometimes it don't have to be you that says it. Sometimes other people can speak up for you on your behalf of your character and whatever messages trying to get across. That's also why we have trusted messages in political spaces. People that can attest to the, to what you mean and what you're about to do and your reasoning behind it. Because sometimes the actual person doing it, it's not gonna come off right. And so my concern is that we're looking at the board members on their surface. And former Superintendent Fagin alluded to some of the people that were around her and around some of those board members. But guess what? Some of those people are still around. And it seems like, I can't say that they just left them out there to dry and hang around, but they don't seem to have the same support that was energized behind them to get elected. And it's important for that to be a continuum of whatever it is they learn and we're, we're pruning and getting rid of or learning to do better. Because just because you got a microphone, don't mean you should use it. Just because you have a following doesn't mean you shouldn't properly lead people. And that's been part of the problem. But my bone to pick with some is that for some of those board members, some of the reasonings that people like them or follow them or are drawn to them and whatever they talk about on a regular day of the week is the same behavior that they're exuding on this school board. And the general public expected them to be different.
Yes.
But, and that, and that didn't happen. You hope that they become more refined, because now they're viewed in a different way. But not everybody will subscribe to knowing that level of difference, maturity and integrity. And so when it doesn't happen, you know, voters have to become more engaged. So that's why I want to see more people. This, this one thing, right? This school board, this one issue, the superintendent. Imagine if we put all this people power behind everything, every time, every elected body, how much further we would be in like, as Siggy said, we got the governor's race coming up in 2026. We got the county mayor's race coming up in 2026.
Every county.
County commissioners, all these folks will come up for these seats. Don't just ask them for their resume, ask them for their track record and expect to see the results. And if they can't show you that, then don't give them your vote.
So with those upcoming elections that you mentioned, Theron, and I pose this question to both of you. Because of how the city galvanized behind Dr. Marie Fagin, do you think that same energy will happen for just even those two particular upcoming campaigns? Do you think that the city is shifting towards mobilization? Do you think something is changing here in the city?
I would have to, you want to go first, Theron?
You can.
Okay, I hope they do, because I never seen this kind of energy. Usually you see this kind of energy when a black man was killed by a police officer. But this is energy behind a school superintendent losing her position. And the most ironic thing about, she's not even from Memphis. That's make it even more so, you know. So I hope all of those people that have all of that energy that they were showing, they, they, they kind of take that energy and realize we can make a mass difference in 2026. Not just in your area, in every area, because it seems like it was a few from Cordova, you know, from different spectrums.
All over.
You know, and so, so my thing is they take that same energy and use it for what's coming up, because I don't think too many people are paying attention to 2026. So I hope when this kind of settled down, because they was just saying how they gonna keep this energy for Dr. Fagin, take some of that energy and look at the bigger picture here. If you are seeing the same players, the same cliques, the same sororities, the same fraternity, that's what they're saying. If you're seeing all of these people are still running Memphis, and I'm gonna say, I'm ready to see Memphis fight and fight for a change for the better. I'm tired of seeing the same names winning, you know, but it goes with the money. That's when you do grassroots. If five dollars, everybody get five dollars, one of them, you're gonna, you'll be able to make it happen. Because it's the people that you have to really, and this way, everybody that is running for something next year. Because a lot of those people that's sitting in that audience, they're running for something, trust me, you know. So it ain't all about Dr. Fagin, you know.
There was a lot of politicking going on.
So take that same energy, but stop this messiness. That's what I don't like about Memphis. It's like they like messiness.
Yeah, it's some messiness going on.
It's a way you can do things without being messy. And that's what I don't like, because when I had to do things out here in Millington, like I'm telling, talking now about galvanizing and take that energy and put it to work. I did that in a way where it was controlled. We, you know, and that's what they have to do. They got to get their emotions out of it, but keep their, the, the, no, the spirit of the emotion and take that emotion, all that emotion they have about what they're doing to Dr. Fagin. And they need to start now to form. But one thing about Memphis, I think people hold on to grudges.
Oh, yeah.
My thing is when it comes to politics, hey, you win some, you lose some, you know. I can move on, because first of all, I don't have the energy or the strength to be worried about somebody that might have beat me in a race and I'm mad at them. I don't want to do nothing else. But I'm moving on with life, you know. And I can still talk to that person and be able to have a conversation with that person. And if we have a goal in mind, I can work with that person. But Memphis are different. It's like.
They are. They are different. And I want to take that a little bit off of what you said, Mom, about, you know, just the people standing behind Dr. Fagin. We've never seen anything like it. So Theron, I want you to answer the original question about, do you think the city is going to galvanize in the upcoming elections? But first I want you to start off with, why do you think Memphis had such an affinity for Dr. Fagin? What was it? Was it how the, the, the PR was spinning and she was out in the public? Like what was it that had Memphis on fire for Dr. Fagin? Was it truly because she was a good superintendent? What was it?
I think for those who were pro Fagin staying and coming and staying and remaining superintendent, she was humanized. People saw her, you know, dancing with the kids, talking to the kids. Even some teachers said she substituted in their classrooms. She was doing what people view as regular, everyday Memphisian stuff. She had on her nice suit, but she was with the regular folks doing regular stuff. And people could appreciate that they could relate to that. So she appeared very relatable. And then Memphis tends to say they want change, but then when they get. But then when they get a version of that, that's where you see people split up to say, yes, we like these changes or no, no, we hate them. And she came in and was like, I'm taking care of business out the gate. You can love me or hate me, but she committed to doing what she thought was best uh with her decades of experience across multiple states and said she knew this could work. She committed to the cause. She made the moves and said she was gonna make the moves and despite how you feel about them, she was not gonna apologize for those moves because she um said that she was working with the best interest of the students, teachers and admin in mind. Now, there are opinions that differ um from how that was received, but those were her intentions. And the impact has been questionable depending on how you were impacted. Now, what she also could have done that would have maybe given her a little bit more room to to deal with things and maybe have more uh people or support on her side for those that may have been on the fence was those concerns that some of those teachers and principals did have that were valid. If she had taken some time to address those and then make public how she was going to address those or be willing to address those, that may have given her just the gap she needed to stay in there at least another couple of months or or put some milestones in place to kind of track some additional progress. And maybe she did those things and we just don't know. Uh my understanding is that it wasn't significant enough or that people weren't made aware. And so if they don't know, it's as if it didn't happen.
I'm gonna piggyback on that.
Okay.
That's true, how she came in. She was human. They never seen a superintendent come in and do that. That's just one part of the job. And like I said, I've been looking at the meetings and this is from my own research. And this is from, you know, because like I said, I don't like to just take the word of somebody. I'm gonna do my own research. So it bothered me when, this is prior to the new board even coming. That uh I don't know his name, one of the men uh that didn't win, I can't think of his name. But he said, we should not have hired a super her or any without the background check. So they should have never offered the job, the old board should have never offered the job if the background check didn't come in.
So why did they?
That's, I'm getting ready to get to that. So um so he made his concern there. But they didn't listen to him. But you had, you had um community members also interviewing with her. You know, and now some of those community members are on that board. And in the beginning, they 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 liked her. You know, this, oh, she's gonna be good, she's gonna be good. And so I might, you know, listening and looking and I said, okay, this is who they hired. And um then next thing you know, when Ms. Green, Athena Green didn't win, before leaving out, she was saying uh how she, you know, um they had issues like uh this uh from my research. Uh and when I found the principals and everybody, they sent their concerns to Dr. Fagan. I could think Dr. Fagan wasn't quick enough to address some of the things that was going on. So they felt like during then that um that um, okay, we should terminate it because this is causing a huge operational problem. And so if that was the case, they should have done that during their term. They should have brought their charges out during their term. But I think what happened during their term spilt over into the new commissioner's term. But at the same time, it didn't help none for you to, for a board member to quickly, who was on her side, thought she was one of the best. That is why I believe the the public was so passionate. And that's another reason why I believe they felt like it was a witch hunt because that your mouth can get you in trouble. Cause I even asked the same question. She gotta go. What do you mean? What she do? You know, and everything. And so anyone and everyone that you go by and see, and they and they said that a lot out there. That's what they heard. That's what they, you know, a board member was saying this to me. And I believe them because same thing here. And I'm like, that is what makes so many of those people out there upset. However, I have a problem with the fact that Dr. Fagan, this is me from my research. Why did you scrub your information off the uh internet? You seem to not have existed until you became superintendent at Memphis Shelby County School. Now, I'm not trying to dog Dr. Fagan or anything like that. I have nothing against her.
There's no digital footprint of Dr. Fagan?
No digital footprint until she became superintendent. You know, you know, I research.
Are you aware of that, Theron Bond?
So I knew that the background check was, I can't say missing something and I can't say questionable, but there were concerns surrounding uh her background check and there were concerns about information that they could find about her regarding specific things in Detroit.
Exactly.
That left a lot of red flags that I don't know if the board didn't work hard enough to get them addressed or maybe they knew about them in private and couldn't say publicly. But there was some missing information that definitely led and motivated them to move a particular which is if you didn't have the information and we're talking about a school system other options, then why weren't the other options exercised at that time? Too many red flags about um Fagin's then.
That was my biggest concern right there. And then my second biggest concern came when um her, the person she brought in from Detroit to be over SRO, the security left so suddenly. So in my research, what I found was disturbing.
What did you find?
I cannot, I'm not going to go eh, you know, get in trouble, but allegedly. But it is on paper, so I I'm not really, because you can find it it on in court records. But I, but because his name seemed kind of, um but allegedly, uh he did something that he shouldn't have done and shouldn't be around children. I put it that way. I'm not going to go. It happened many, many years ago, you know, and this was an appeal. This was an appeal uh um law document that uh he was doing. And and so I said, is that why he left so suddenly? Because someone was going to call him out on that? But if you knew that about his history, why would you bring him? So I started questioning her, you know, judgment on hiring then. Because why would you bring him around children? Because that just, it happened too suddenly. So I did, I start doing, you know, what I do. And that's what came up. And uh and so that bothered me. And like I, and and like I said, and then having your information scrubbed. And why would you wanna do that when you have such a stellar resume and all these accolades? You know, that somewhere it's been written about or somewhere it's been on TV or something. You know, I don't care what's out there on me. I don't have nothing to hide. So I don't have no reason to scrub my information. Do you all have a reason to scrub your information? So that bothers me on anyone who scrubs their information.
But you know what? I will say this, it may have been all about optics for her, um being in such a powerful role, such a superintendent uh cleaning up her digital footprint. People do it all the time.
Wild out there, have some wild stuff out there or something.
She was controlling.
Okay, well, that could be it. But I'm just saying, you know, I'm a baby boomer generation, so. I'm still old school, you know, so I I I questioned that.
You wanna know?
So I would say that's, that's a good example of if we're seeing, if we've seen what's happened, not just with all of the superintendents within the last, what, five years? System. You know, we got school board, there's uh Memphis City Council, there's Shelby County uh Commissioners. Obviously, you have a city mayor, you have a county mayor, and then depending on which municipality you live in, you might have your own mayor, uh Alderman Town Council, what have you. Then you got the governor's race. So when we talk about twenty twenty six and you were asking specifically about the governor's race and the mayor's race. Well, on the governor's race, obviously, we, there's an idea of maybe who the Republican will be on that side. Um there may be a number of independents that pop up across the state. Uh but the real question is who would the Democrat be? And if the party at the state level and respective county levels are doing their due diligence to get the strongest person possible. Because if they are just waiting until this year, twenty twenty five to get the person, then they are already two years at minimum behind, let alone having to consider the other races that will work that year and what that means for uh fundraising, collaboration, uh top of the ticket, trickling down uh funds, other ways of getting people out to vote. But on the county mayor's race, here is the problem right now today. It's too many people in it.
Yes.
Already.
Yes.
Today, it is too many people in it. And people have started to um acknowledge their potential interests in running years ago. And so some of them have been actively working. Some of them have, you know, things in their office that indicate they are running. Some of them have had uh pop-ups at their birthday parties announcing they are running. Some people have been rumored to run and haven't made their formal announcements just yet. And I think last count I had was somewhere between seven and and ten. Seven and ten and understand that our um county mayor's race is partisan. Which means that there has to be a Republican primary and a Democratic primary. And the best person on each side to a certain point is the one who goes forward. So what does that mean for Republicans to already have it narrowed down to about two or three choices? And then uh uh Democrats have been, you know, seven to ten people, which means the money is gonna be spread thin, the resources are gonna be spread thin, um the staffers are gonna be spread thin. They not gonna be able to raise the money that they wanna raise because they dipping into five of the same pockets. And then there can only be one winner of the primary to go against the Republican. And then you gotta hope that you get all of that support, but it never happens because once what Memphis does often is once they dig their heels in, that's it. Sometimes for good reason, but in this case, it behooves them to rally behind whoever the primary person is, especially if they have done the work. Now, sometimes they didn't and they just pulled the wool over people's eyes and that's not okay, but they're the person. Um but in some cases, it could all be avoided before it got there, which means the likelihood of them winning increases because they got their stuff together beforehand. And there are people, most of them who um have county connections now are gonna be running for county mayor. But if they aren't gonna do anything different than Lee Harris, they should probably stay at home. If they're only going to run on their name and not an excellent track record, they should probably stay at home. If they're only gonna pay the overpriced white consultants who can't get them to the finish line with the win, yet exhausting all of their resources, they should also stay home along with those consultants.
Price white consultants.
Yes, I know consultants who charge forty, fifty thousand dollars. Expensive out there.
And let me, and let me tell you, uh they are already ahead of the Democrats for the county race. And this is, and we talking county races for twenty twenty six, although we, you know, it all began talking with Fagan. But I'm really want whoever in Memphis that was there supporting Fagan and still support Fagan. And um to take that drive because trust me, it was some down there who wanted to run for races. And I looked at them like, I don't think I will vote for you, you know, if that's the way you're gonna behave, you know, and everything. So that's what I'm saying. You have to go, it's a way you go about presenting yourself, especially if you know you're gonna run for a race, you know? And because see, you got to think about, you have Millington, you have Lakeland, you have Bartley, you have Germantown, you have Cogeville. You have all of these uh uh suburban areas that also votes in the Shelby County race. And just what happened with our election in Millington. They, the Republicans now already started their strategy, but thank God we stopped it, you know? And uh because they was making sure, they made it loud and clear, MAGA. Handpicked candidates.
It's gonna be a lot of MAGA.
It was handpicked candidates. And they, and they didn't make, they didn't make it no secret how they felt about a Democrat.
And so you know what that means is when you have the municipalities plus the people in the city, because that's the thing. Memphis city, Memphis city folks were for Memphis city mayor, but county folks, you got the county and the folks who live in the city. So you have everybody. And so if we know that things are hyper partisan like that in the suburbs and municipalities, then that means you gotta go extra hard on the inside game with the city. And they need people who know how to do that. I hope I see some new campaign managers come up that's busting they, but some new people help fundraise, some new volunteer coordinators. And that doesn't mean you just leave some of the 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 old school players who have been around a a long time just, just out to dry. No, you go to them for sage advice, but I wanna see people my age running this show. Candidates letting them. Because we're the ones who have come up and seen what good she, leadership looks like and also needed to transition for when we become elders. And if we don't get it right now, it's not gonna be that way. Stop hiring these same old folks just because somebody helped you thirty years ago. What you doing now? Cause if they don't know about the TikToks, the Lemonades, the Red Notes, the Facebook, digital ad buys, don't talk to me. If they don't know how to do more than just door knock, don't talk to me. If they ain't never won no county wide race, don't talk. What I'm talking about.
Don't leave the door knocking out. Cause remember, I said, I'm a baby. It gotta be both. That is exactly because that is, everybody wanted me to run for things, right? Here in Millington. And twenty twelve, then we have a good time, Amina. I did that and I still won because I did it on purpose to show two things. One, I wanted that race to go onto a runoff because I didn't want the good old boy to win. And if I had not entered, the good old boy would have won. So successful in that. Two, to show minorities. And I'm gonna go on and say blacks, you know, here in uh Milton, because um that you can run. They didn't know that, you know, uh uh you wouldn't believe some of the things I hear in the South here. Didn't think they could run or they were, they felt afraid to run because, you know, the percentage as far as minority. And everything I said, Milton would end up becoming back some fifteen, twenty years ago, it is happening right now. It is happening right now. So I'm getting ready to surprise them again because we have an open aldermancy. So this is breaking news. I'm not, I'm not gonna say I would, I get it, but I put my letter of interest in. I put it in for a reason. Because when I heard this young lady say, I didn't think I could run for anything and they don't see a black female on our board. We only have one black male on our board. And so I said, maybe third time will be a charm. And I don't care to run for the seat. But I already am very aware of what's going on and so forth. So I, so everybody, so I said, I'm gonna put my name in. Just, and so I put my name in. And but if I get it, I get it. If I don't, I don't. I still be, I still would be at every all mayor and alderman meeting to make sure what you all are doing. I still would do what I do, you know?
What I like about Miss G and her saying that she's gonna run is that she's informed. She's been to the meeting, so she know how the meetings run. She knows what it means to read the agenda, find the agenda, understand what's happening, how you collect those votes. There are so many people that hop up and run for office. They ain't been to the meeting on the board they wanna serve on. And it just simply doesn't make sense to me. You have so many people that wanna run. They wanna lead folks and they never follow so much as a dog walking down the street. I need folks to learn what it means to follow before you lead, to work as a team before you're running solo to lead uh hundreds of thousands of people. And it's been so problematic. Some people get very comfortable in these seats and then they go as high as they can. And then it's like, what's next? Where are they supposed to go? And that's why we end up in situations like we did last night is because so many people just sit around and they said nothing until they came to their front doorstep. But all of these issues affect every single person. It may not be here today, but you gonna see it tomorrow, your neighbor.
And real quick ladies, because I love the fiery passion that both of you are exuding right now. It reminds me of the passion that was exuded last night between two board members specifically.
But is she like politics, not like politics? That's what it is.
Did you see the fiery exchange between McKissick and Murphy? Did you see the fiery exchange between McKissick and Murphy?
I thought they was gonna meet each other in the parking lot, to be honest. Watching this thought the same thing. Y'all ain't gotta tell me. I thought it. I thought they was gonna catch each other in the parking lot and Tawana Wick was gonna come out. I'll be honest.
And I'ma tell you this, the Daily Memphian, they always know how to get the money. Always know how to get the money shot.
That was my favorite picture from last night.
The Daily Memphian always get the money shot.
Oh, is there a faux cog, man?
I mean, I kid you not, I, I had that exchange. I'm like, oh, snap. And I know how uh Tawana can be, and and Tawana really do have a good heart. But it's hard for some people to change some of the things that they're used to doing over the years. And 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 uh and I'm not gonna sit here and lie and say I dislike Tawana. I don't.
The number one most ridiculed.
Yes, she is. Tawana just.
Think that another media personality or Facebook person has been.
She really is not that person that you hear. See, uh, that is Matthews got a lot of people hating on her from over the years. Uh, from what he said about her and and everything. And I'll never forget that the first time I ever talked with her, I said, it was because of what I heard him say about her and her mother and her children. And it was so cruel, it was so nasty, it was so degrading. And my spirit had me reach out to her and I told her, you gonna rise, you're still gonna rise and here's gonna fall. And that's where I see things at now. But get out of your own way. Show the people who you really are. Stay off of social media. Don't let, because that is Matthews uh audience love messy. You, and Tawana, yes, you know a lot of these people. You can talk with them without acting like I'm Big Dog. See, it's not no uh big I and little u. See, don't have that type of attitude. No one should have that type of attitude. I don't think I'm better than anyone, anyone. I don't care who you are. And I try to speak that with her and I've seen her get better. She is better. A lot of people just don't see it, but she is a lot better. And and like I told her, be careful who you allow to uh put something in your ear to make you. Because that was the worst thing she could have done was to start saying, she gotta go. Even though the past administration saw that problem before you all even came, they should have took care of it instead of putting it in your lap.
Well, I wonder what will change after her official orientation next week per Ms. Ms. Shelby.
That was something went.
Talk about from last night, ladies, is the person that is replacing Dr. Marie Fagans. We have Career Education Administrator Rodrick Richman. He is the interim of Memphis Shelby County Schools. And from my understanding, he has been around um, he oversaw the district's lowest performing D and F graded schools as well as charter schools, career and technical education, athletics, alternative schools, and student discipline as per the Daily Memphian. So um are either of you ladies familiar with Mr. Richmond?
I am not.
I'm gonna say this. He was in the initial consideration uh before Fagans got here, like when they had the big group and they were going over all the different qualifications and changing them and all that. Um, his names was one of the ones um floating around with some other uh names we're all familiar with in the Memphis community. I would be curious to know why he wasn't picked then. Um, and it's not to say that it just wasn't his time, but why didn't he get picked? Then he has been in that system in some capacity for quite some time. And so if he didn't have the leadership experience to do it, then what could he have done to make it up? And what changed from then and him not being the person to now being the person? And I, I do understand that some of the board has shifted, but some of those folks were on there. In fact, some of the people that voted to out Fagans were people that were on the board at that time. So I wanna know what changed. Um, but he's wanted this for some time. My issue with the quote that he said today was that he was surprised and honored, and that's a lie. He wasn't surprised. The reason I know he wasn't surprised is because there are people within that school system and on that board that knew. And he couldn't be surprised knowing that they were going to name an interim that day. It was on their agenda and they said it out loud. So he had. Twenty-four hours or whether it's, it's two weeks. Matter of fact, at least, I knew at least three of the four names that had been floated around and all three of them were sitting on the side of the board. So how did they not know? He could have been. Anything could have, it was a special call meeting. He probably didn't have to be there. Who knows? Or could have gotten an excused absence. So for him to be surprised, I think is false. But what I have concerns about are what happened immediately after. Now, again, we all human. People can push us to our limits. Sometimes we have adverse reactions. But for him to have viewed firsthand the, the chaos that ensued last night, then to be named interim, then to be uh shouting at people, don't play with me. Negro, that may be true, but you just became a superintendent and black male superintendents don't have the best track record with Memphis Shelby County Schools in recent years. So set a different tone and be a different example and calm some of the chaos. But that's not what he did. He just added to. Now, true or no, we don't know what was said to him. But that was his moment to stop, think and do different, and he didn't. So now the start of his tenure is the loop of that clip saying, don't play with me. Well, guess what? Not only are they not gonna play with you, they gonna double down or whatever they gonna do to make you be accountable. And if you don't, you can go too. And that's what I think he forgot in that moment is the same way they got Fagans out of there. They can get his black, you know what, out of there too. They need people who care about the kids and he's gotta be able to do that in a way that parents, teachers, administrators board believe him to. And he is not going to get a, a year's time to do it. He ain't gonna get much more time than Fagans did. So, so get it right. He's there now. Do everything you can to smooth stuff out and block out what those people are saying. He's gonna have to do that and get better personnel around him. Don't get some of his frat brother friends. Get the people that can come in there and do the job. School system look good.
Because his first impression is, was what I saw yesterday. I didn't know him.
That's a lot of people.
Fagan sat there with poise, calm.
You're not gonna get that with Mr. Richmond.
When I seen that, I'm like, oh, is that who they replaced?
We have a couple of commenters in the chat. Ariel Sawyer Brook says, he went straight Joe Clark at the end. Also, uh, Mr. Campbell said, Tito and Whitelaw told him to calm down. This is not the time or the place. So we saw a little taste of Mr. Richmond and how he responds to the public last night. Um, I have to get off of this live. Um, I'm meeting with some of my students here at Lamont High College at the new Lowry Center. And I want you ladies to close out with your thoughts on with Dr. Fagans ousted at this time and Mr. Richmond coming in. Do you think there will be or definitely be a state takeover of the schools? And what does that mean? And I wanna uh limit your time to no more than three minutes each. We're gonna start with my mom, Deborah Segi.
Okay. Well, I think with uh Dr. Fagans termination, uh although the state wants to take over, that's a one point eight billion dollar uh budget. That's what they want. So the, the parents and the, and the community that is so passionate about, you know, what has happened, you don't want that. You think you may want that. You don't want that. Statistics have shown states that take over school systems, they do not get better. They get worse. Because they're only interested in that money. So I hope that uh Dr. Fagin herself, I, I believe she had very good intentions. And I hope uh wherever she lands that she do, she does well. But I do believe that Memphis was too large of a school system for her to get her training to become a superintendent. And that's why she made some mistakes and she probably made mistakes that was very uh viable to why they had to terminate her, because we don't know about some of those mistakes. We haven't seen the evidence, but once it goes up, we will get it out. I'm sure the uh newspapers or the news, they will highlight why they had to get rid of her. So I just think Memphis was just too big of a system for, but I think she'd do fantastic in a smaller system.
Okay, Theron.
Uh, I've seen the bill and Memphis and Shelby County school affiliated folks better hope it don't get run and passed. Um, Memphis has been the redheaded stepchild of the state for as long as I've been alive. Some things were slightly different, but the current General Assembly looks for any reason to penalize us. And they often isolate us in pieces of legislation that don't even impact other areas of the state or just impact uh Shelby County and let's say Davidson County and the Nashville area. And so what happens during the state takeover is they could appoint um a state board. Um, they could appoint somebody to run the school system. They could turn around and say, well, you know what? We think Fagans was doing a good job. We'll appoint her. And then now she becomes the school board's boss versus the other way around. Um, those board members could be rolled back. There are a number of things that can happen. And so they made a mistake um bringing Mark White in without consulting other legislators in the area um without having those conversations before it got this far. So now that he's been brought in um and he happens to be on the education committee and also be a Republican, all they were waiting on is the invite. Now they have it. Um, they won't be able to rescind it. And the future of Memphis and Shelby County Schools will be a reflection of what happened in yesterday's meeting. Um, and what that means for board members, student parents and teachers uh may not be the best thing for students. And that's who, who should have been at the forefront of all this decision making.
Wow, as always, I appreciate you ladies' commentary. Welcome to the Verbally Effective Live, Mom.
Trying to shine it all on me, but. I'm honored to be talking politics alone uh there in here because uh you know, I just, I'm like, oh, she knows what, see, that's what I believe in, passing that baton to the younger generation. And that's what I'm working on here, getting the young people here in Millington to get involved, get civically involved and all that. Because a lot of times, some people know it in Memphis and Shelby County, you wanna win, uh, you may wanna go out there to Millington. You know, and get to know some people, you know, no, uh, no. Because we've been doing it out here, our, 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 our thing too, because everybody think we're the country, we're not the country. Because uh, uh, you've seen the growth since she left. She hadn't come back home. Um, the other daughter went to Georgia, didn't come back. They say I ain't come back to Milton. But if you was to see Milton, Milton is uh, is just the diamond that I said it would become, you know, and everything. And and then the inclusiveness, you know, oh, they shut off for a long time. But the inclusiveness is now there. The only thing, thank God, we were able to stop the MAGA movement that Terry Rollin wanted to put here in Milton.
Terry Rollin from.
Oh yeah, we go way.
You know.
That's a whole nother podcast. But I gotta go, y'all, but then. Thank you for coming, mom. I'm glad you, you, you did it today. You did it. So we're gonna be seeing you more. And Political Barbie, Theron C. Bond, thank you. Uh, let everybody know where we can see you on the media outlets, either the rest of the day or tomorrow.
Oh, Jesus. So I would say my schedule is a little crazy. Uh, so I don't, I don't know where I'll be tomorrow and the next couple of days, because that's gonna change. I got some stuff pending. But if you aren't able to watch me on any of the outlets, you can find me, I'm about to name all of them that I can remember. You can find me on Facebook, you can find me on Instagram, you can find me on TikTok, you can find me on YouTube Shorts, Lemonade, Red Now, or Fanbase.
And that's it.
Some of, it's either gonna be Political Barbie or Walking Mic Drop.
Walking Mic Drop. That is Theron C. Bond. But thank you, ladies. I gotta go. I gotta go and, you know, do my thing for a minute. But thank you all. You know, I'm gonna call both of you later on this evening. But I wanna also thank all the people that checked in on the chat, listened on live. It looks like our numbers are going up. How about that, ladies? So we gotta have to do this more consistently, but thanks, mom. Y'all may know her as Deborah Segi. I call her mom. And also thank you, Theron C. Bond, Political Barbie. You ladies have an absolutely wonderful day, okay?